I'd like to call this meeting to order. First, our business and question.
Senator flag of the United States of America. Angels in the Republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Give me a read of that. Copy of tonight's agenda. Change of bid to the lobby. I'll make a motion. It will be accepted. Second. We have a motion and second. I'll favor it. Aye. Post. So carry. Recommend approval of the minutes of August 20. They've already given a chance. They've got the new minutes. Any corrections, deletions? I recommend approval.
All set.
And a motion and second. I'll favor it. Aye. Post. So carry. Review the accounts, balances, financial statements for the general water sewer funds for August 31st and 22nd. Answering the claims list for August 2022. Any other questions?
We paid for the liquor store parking lot. That was with the American Rescue Act. Is that what it is?
There doesn't.
The liquor store parking lot? That was with the American Rescue Act?
Yeah, that would be covered as a.
Yeah. That was my suggestion. Okay, then we'll talk about that a little bit later. So, yeah.
I recommend approval of the claims for August 2022. Second. We have a recommendation. Set. I'll favor it. Aye. Post. So carry. To review the accounts, balances, financial statements for the general water sewer funds for August 31st. Motion to table. Second. We have a motion to table. Second. I'll favor it. Aye. Post. So carry. Recommend approval of resolution 2022. Yeah, we call it full 2022 levy and full summary budget. You have a chance to look at the assets. There's going to be a large increase next year in the budget.
Is that the same as last year?
Well, if you want to pull out that little spreadsheet that I made.
I did too.
So. The net tax capacity increased by 200,000 because they reassessed all the properties on the waterfront and also the commercial properties. So I kind of made a little spreadsheet. If you kept, if you kept the same tax rate as we had before, then you can look under that and you can see that's what the tax levy would be. And I kind of, you know, I just kind of kept going down and down with different tax rates. And, and I just plucked one out in the middle. You know what? The people that are on the waterfront would get a huge tax increase if you kept it like that. If you kept it at the same tax rate, um, or, you know, you could have a lower tax rate, the tax levy wouldn't be as high. And so I just suggested one kind of in the middle, a 244.
The thing about that, if you look though, as you go down to year seven, year seven is basically what we're collecting right now. Right. If you keep the tax rate at 36.5% like we are now, the assessment, uh, yeah, it's going to be $70,000 increase in tax revenue, which mainly came to the market property, which went up about 75% in value in assessed values. That's where the money come from. But by the year, in seven years from now, otherwise we, you know, seven years from now, our cost would be up there. So we would probably be looking at adjustment somewhere. So we could, we could, with the revenue that's anticipated, we can reduce our taxes anticipating three, four years from now, probably back to, you know, an increase. So the 244 is eventually leaving the tax bracket over right now.
It's, it's leaving the tax levy similar to what we had. It's a little bit increased from last year, but the tax rate for everyone is going to be lower.
Yeah, everybody's going to get a tax rate, but the money that the city has to operate on, we're going to have a small increase in operating costs, but by lowering the tax rate, still lowering the tax rate, we're still going to have more money than what we have this year in budget, anticipating few additional costs here. And so not too often, we actually, well, we go to lower the tax rate and still have more money in the kitty thanks to the lake property.
So, like I said, you know, so I just suggested that 29.63% with the 244, you know, you could always drop it down. Maybe, maybe tonight you want to stay 250 and then drop it down, um, because we can.
You can always go down.
We can always go down, but we can't go up. Yeah. So, I mean, it was just my suggestion that I threw out and just looking at the different rates. I just hope everybody understood what I was trying to explain.
We're still quite far ahead of the cheapest tax rate in the whole county. And now we're looking at reducing that. So adding up both territory and the city in the actual balance of budgets. Right. And still lowering the tax rates. Well, that's the council. So we want to leave at 244 that we're talking.
Unless you want something different. That was just my suggestion. And that would, like the mayor said, it would, it would give us a little bit more for, for inflation and, um, increase in expenses because of inflation and those sorts of things. But it would still be a lot less tax rate for.
This may be a question we should answer too, but for example, next year, we can adjust this rate.
Yeah.
Always.
Yeah.
We could always. I definitely, I think the 244 option is wise.
I think. What's the rate then? It goes from 30, double 30% or 35%?
Yeah, it was 36.653% and then that it goes down to 29.636%.
So dropping about 7%,
Yeah.
or lowering our tax, property tax by 7%. That's, that's the discussion. We'll still have more money in the general kitty to.
Yeah.
So we'll see if that benefit is the non-lake people will actually have lower taxes. The people on the lake who still go have higher taxes.
But it wouldn't be as high as it would be if we kept the same rate.
Yeah. I'll make a motion and have we set the total levy of $2,444 for 2023.
I was thinking that.
We have a recommendation and second. I'll favor it. Aye. Post.
And then, and then we have to, the law changed and you have to submit this summary budget statement, which is in a format that the auditors, um, state auditor's office requires. And it's real, it's a real general format. So that's what that summary budget statement is. And that has to be submitted to the county. I think they have a choice to print it on those proposed tax statements if they want to. I don't think they have to. So I don't know. I'll have to ask them if they're going to do that or not.
I will do that, but we're going to find some to do this tonight.
Right, right. And then we have to, um, by next meeting, set the, set our, you know, budget meeting that, because that has to go on the, on the tax statement also.
And then the budget between November 24th and December or something.
Right. So I just threw out there December 13th because that's usually when we, we do the final one.
For the general public, I'll give you guys a, basically why the taxes, why, why we can lower the taxes and why there's been an increase in some people and not in others. Uh, what happens, it's based on among the sales of lake property or residential property. And if there's not enough sales, which there weren't in, on the interior property, therefore the tax is still the same. There were a number of sales on the lake property and they don't count bank sales because they could be a foreclosure sale that aren't true effective of the market value of properties. So there has to be a circumstantial sales at even six, registered sales. And then based on the value of those sales, if there's, in this particular case, there's about a 75% increase from the previous market value of those homes. So then the state steps in. If the county does not raise the value of the properties along, say, the lake, which they did, otherwise the state will step in and raise it for. So that's how it works. So who's getting the value here because of sales? It's the interior people of Rainier. Their taxes are staying the same until tonight, where we passed the motion to lower by 7%. And the people on the lake actually were lowering their taxes by 7% while their property values went up by 75%. So that's how, that's how it works. It's really up in the county assessor's hands because of the number of sales. Okay. Moving on. Uh, somebody got you. Okay, you're going to take care of that then, uh, summary budget then. All right. Next, Joe, you're here with the application for payment for the, uh, application paid for the L N L construction for the property. I see you turned it in. This is the first one that's been provided to us. And I think we were a little, we have received, I believe, we're still short of some of the compliance issues. Some of the payroll reports are not in yet. KTM's in, I believe, L N L's, but I know they're missing some employees on their things. So very complete, Narf, the landscaper is not in, like, because Cheryl's going to have to.
Narf is the one that's missing.
Well, somebody had asked to follow up with the paperwork, which you won't. Have there been any communication? I've been trying to get hold of them on the striking.
Yeah. They're scheduled for Thursday, weather dependence. I'm not sure how the weather's going to play.
Well, it's going to rain.
If it doesn't work out, then I guess next week is the final.
Who's your striker?
I don't know.
Well, I'll be down there.
Subcontractor.
So the paper, paper request is for, well, 200?
197,593,479. With a 10% retention is 183,549.
Yeah, 183,549. Joe, have you, a question? Have you looked at the asphalt on here? I've had several comments on it from different people and I said I'd get a chance to talk to you. It looks like there are several word baths in it. Actually, Thursday might be able to tell you, but that could be, you know, just seedy issues. But if there are, what's around it?
It's unfortunate. They didn't park a lot of tulips in the base, went really well, and then the top where it didn't go so well, they got a little on it over there. It still drains to the north west, still drains to the river like it's supposed to, but there are a few little areas that we certainly didn't want, weren't in the design for sure.
Did there any correction that can be done? What would you recommend? You, you've seen this before on a day and the first time this has happened, parking lots sometimes get back to having holes in the gap. There's a detour or corrections or whatever.
My thought was, you know, if it still drains towards the river like it's supposed to, heading to the most bottom over there, but I think it's, it's doing its job. I think it's, there's some aesthetic, there's some lamps that we wouldn't like to see, but I think the blacktop is sufficient like this. And I think it's the structure we want on the base, we want, I think, a drain in the direction that's supposed to. So it's not perfect, but I think it does need its intended purpose.
Okay, that's, that's the answer I have for that. Okay. With that said, uh, the pay application, uh, any, any issues on that?
And then.
Retention here, of course.
And then also that, um, you can see that change order number one, 1350, that's the later for insulating the storms. Or the, the county's actually going to reimburse us for that.
The county's going to pay for some of the items on the second, I think they're on the second page or.
Yeah.
1550 and 5,000.
No, 1350. And then the materials for that also, so.
Right, insulated, that's who else.
So, yeah, working with the county engineer on that.
Do you have a recommendation to accept the application? I'll make a motion. All set. I have a motion and second. I'll favor it. Aye. Post. So carry. All right. Moving on, uh, American Rescue Act expense updates.
Um, I've shown, I've shown this little spreadsheet before. We received $60,695 from the American Rescue Act. Um, there's the items that we, we've already allocated towards it, um, last year in 2021. So we have $52,417 remaining. And we, we wanted to set aside the 9,500 for the GIS mapping for the water sewer system. So that leaves us 42,917. And we talked about before applying those arcaphones to the blacktopping of the parking lot at the liquor store. If that's what the council approves, then there'll be some leftover that we could use on, um, remaining expenses on the boat ramp project, if everyone likes that plan.
Works for me. Any questions? You been through all that? I'll maybe not, because Cheryl, yours.
So then that would be like, what, any other stuff I was looking to do for launch?
Be 11,000. Oh, that we could apply to those expenses on that one. Or you could take more out of the liquor stores out of the difference or however anybody wants to do that.
I mean, I like how you laid it out and I think it's a good investment for that to have gone to the liquor store for that specific project.
Do we need a motion on that? I have a guess since we allocated money to different areas and how we spent it in that. I'll make a recommendation for that. Second. We have a recommendation and second. I'll favor it. Aye. Post. So carry. Moving on to the liquor store operating statement. Well, you had another great one.
We did. And Todd, earlier, or last meeting, you had said, keep an eye on things. I was on vacation, but I am watching as the invoices come in now. So I'm making adjustments as needed.
It looks like it grows roughly as well as it should be. So you must be keeping an eye on it. Leaving out your 61.17, 63.71. So are you planning on that?
Yes, I will continue to do that.
And then what's for, uh, in the sales or we have donations?
Um, we had a lot of, uh, businesses help with Rainier Days. They gave a lot of donations to help with all the costs of everything.
What's this month coming?
Well, we just had our pig roast.
Yeah.
And that was a huge success. Yes. And then, uh, we'll kind of just see where shack season takes us. It slows down, but we'll try to have a few cribbage tournaments if there's enough people around. And we'll do a Halloween party in October and then just kind of wait it out till deer season's over, as we always do.
Well, we're on a nice, nice pace, so I can't see any, any, any issues at all. I mean, you had a lot of things going on for a month. Rainier did, of course, you have the pig roast. Did that any issue in the cattle or deer channel or anything like that?
Not yet, so hopefully it stays that way.
Has there been any issue, uh, full tabs or that kind of stuff?
I want to give a big shout out to Jen and her crew, um, the rec club put on the benefit for Josh and Vic at the pig roast. He was, he says that those bar tigers rocked it up. There were a lot of people there and, uh, there are no complaints that they did a wonderful job. There was a lot of people there, yes. I know it's difficult to actually, we last month we closed 20 boxes over there. Chase, Chase, we want to wonder if we have them now, so. E tabs are all crazy, so it's all good. That last part is perfect.
Do you have any questions for Jen there? Anything else? No, no sir. Good. Thank you, Jen.
Recommendation.
Red Kid motion. All set. Red motion is second. I'll favor it. Aye. Post. So carry. Bill, you want to step forward? We have a couple of firsts.
Yep.
Any other questions, Phil?
Issues, uh, I, I'm by myself now. My summer help has gone back to school. I'm trying to do my best on this job, trying not to be interfered with as much as possible. And I've got the culvert set up for next week with Steve Boyham. Price on that is $700. Yep. By Wilbers there. Just been doing a lot of locates lately, a lot. And that takes up time. Um, been in communication with John down there on the arch every morning, the last two mornings he's been here, just talking with him how things are going and where he can park his stuff and keeping the road blocked that night. I'm going to start hydrant flushing and pumping out the hydrant soon before the weather gets too cold. I put the rec club, uh, container in position out there and we're going to put some vent holes in it next week. Talked to Johnny Warren about it today.
I think I mentioned to you earlier, Phil, the chance, I didn't even notice, but those trees in the triangle.
I have not had a chance to do that.
They could use a, we blacked out one of the trees. If you get a guy to get on that, uh, see if you can get out. Get down once anyway. Anything else for Bill? You want to get a cover of the main thing?
Well, um, sorry.
Oh, sorry. I, I know I have a lot to do, so this is just, if it's not on the schedule to get looked at this year, then maybe next spring. It's just the, the decking over by Main Street part is wonky from after the water.
From the water, yes.
So I think it needs to be jacked up a little bit.
Yeah, it just needs to be repositioned.
But not anything, obviously, that.
Thank God it was a floater. It floated and it stayed right in that little area.
It did, yeah. I checked out.
Yeah.
The bar club was supposed to give a shout out to Bill. And we got our Saturday market set up for the, and everything, all the tenants, everything operating for us, so all we had to do was put our stuff on. So we got to prepare to do that, so thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
Okay, is Bill going to get any help or is this it?
I don't think so, Phil. We see, uh, we get the rink going and that.
Yeah, when we get the rink going, um, when the weather's going to get cold, I need to tighten up the boards over there because a lot of them are, we got to wait for the weather to cool down to straighten out the boards. They straighten out when it gets cold, so.
We need to find some, but right now I'm clicking that card.
And you can communicate with us then.
When we started advertising for, uh, rink, Phil.
Usually in November, because that, you know, usually it's not show.
I, I have a person lined up right now. I've been talking to a friend of mine that works Saturdays and Sundays and the days that school has off, Bud's old schedule. Because Bud told me last year he can't do it anymore. He can't keep up with the snow removal on the big rink and we had to do a lot of it for him last year. He told me that, so.
But, yeah, we usually advertise in November because it's not really until the very end of the year, depending upon the weather that you're on.
It's October, November, yeah. I, I've talked to a couple of young people too. I've talked to Dominic and stuff too about that.
And he sounded like he might be interested.
Yes, he sounded like he was, so.
Anything else for Bill? No, sir. Okay, thanks, Jill.
Thank you.
Thanks, Lord Business. It's, uh, Pooch County, uh, Saltwater, Buckhorn Workshop. You want to give us an update in the next year?
Yeah, that's just, uh, they're doing this workshop about the Emerald Ash Ford, that's along with that grant that we have with them. Um, and then we have our, um, tree committee. And, uh, that's going to be next week at 6:00 here, so.
Okay.
Spread the word.
Go ahead. Got it then?
That's it.
Okay, then. Uh, next is the recommend approval for the proposal for the conditional assessment for the Rainier community building in Pollywood and application for the historical society website. Who is doing the assessment?
Oh, well, I, I reached out to several different architectural firms that are listed on the Minnesota Historical Society website, and this, um, firm got back with me. It is Todd Brooker, and he was very interested in coming up. He's from, he's from the cities and he, he does this sort of thing a lot. And, um, and I pretty much, I've gone into the portal and I've got the grant application mostly completed and it's due on the 14th, so, um, I just wanted approval to, um, to hire this firm, to submit the grant.
Is the assessment, is that, uh, was the grant paid for the assessment also?
The grant paid $10,000 of the assessment and then he said it would be up to $13,000, so a little bit more.
Opportunity.
Yeah. Yeah, so just a little bit more we'll have to, we'll have to cover. And that'll be next year's budget.
That if, if that is, if it goes up to 13.
Yeah. Depending upon travel and, you know, housing and coming up, hotel expenses.
Everybody got that, Dan?
Yeah.
Do you have a recommendation?
I'll make a recommendation to approve the proposal for condition assessment for the Rainier community building contract.
Recommendation, second. I'll favor it. Aye. Post. So carry. Uh, next, please welcome the ambulance steering committee update.
I think you have a copy of this document with you, but, um, for the benefit of the rest of the folks that are here, the ambulance committee's been meeting for several months, uh, folks that are on, their members from the county.
Can you talk to them so they can hear?
Is this not on?
It is. It just have. No, you just have to speak into it.
Testing.
Ambulance committee. Uh, members of the county, city of International Falls, Rainier, obviously, and folks from, St. Louis County have been meeting for several months to talk about the annual deficit that the current ambulance, um, services are running. That's about $250,000 to $300,000 a year. And this is due to primarily the way that the government, especially Medicare and Medicaid, pay for their services. If you've been to the hospital and you're on Medicare, they pay 10%, 15%, something like that. So the money just isn't there to keep the ambulance system going. Another downfall is the distance to regional hospitals, especially for transfer patients. There's a set limit that they can be paid. Typically, they go to either Duluth or, or Bemidji. And obviously, the geographical area, the ambulance service is almost 1,000 square miles. Uh, issue is not unique with our area. It's a rural issue. It's actually being studied for the Center of Rural Policy and Development out of St. Peter, at a kind of a branch out of Mankato State. The current discussion is focusing on establishing a taxing, taxing district similar to the rural fire. Um, the current discussion is focusing on establishing a tasking, taxing district similar to the Rural Fire Protection Agency, I do believe it's called, which I know that, um, county members and the city of Rainier pay for that service. Uh, best guess is if this goes to the county for approval or discussion, um, they would look at taxing about 6,200 parcels. Um, but that obviously would be determined at, at, uh, at a, at a future meeting. And we figured that amount based on about 6,200 parcels would be between $50 and $60 annually. Uh, we did have Rob Pastor, the CEO of Rainy Lake Medical Center, and asked him if there was anything that they could do, um, as a hospital. Um, and he's willing to talk to the other providers, see if they could come up with a plan to maybe lower that so the impact on the taxpayers wouldn't be as, wouldn't be as, um, as bad, let me put it that way. But if you look at 50 bucks a year, that's less than a dollar a week. That's pretty damn cheap for, for advanced medical service, especially considering what we had happen the past few months. Um, Rob Ecklin did attend some of the meetings. There may be some relief from the state in the future because this is a rural issue. Um, but, uh, as everybody knows, it takes a lot of time to get anything through the legislature at this time. We have another meeting coming up in a couple of weeks. I can keep you posted if anything else happens. Questions?
Well, I have other questions. One, the 6,200 parcels.
Yep. I should say E-911 numbers.
Yeah, I'm just trying to think, how many owners are in 6,200 parcels?
I can't answer that question. But you know what? Dennis, they are breaking that out and they are looking at people that own 400 acres and have 10 parcels in there. Is it fair to, is it fair to count them or tax each individual one, that, that amount of money? Wait, wait. And they're also looking at bare land, okay? Is it fair to tax them, um, you know, whatever the fire district say, or whatever the ambulance district comes up with, 50 to 60 bucks? Is it fair to tax them the same as a residential or the same as a commercial? So that's being discussed. This is a first cut. We don't know how many numbers. That number could jump to 12,000. Who knows?
Yeah, that'd be my, my issue here because, as you know, you probably only 1,000 households in it? 1,000 households in their ambulance district?
Um, I would think that there are more than that.
You think so? I mean, I think quite a lot of people.
They're actually using this based on the RFPA model, you know? And, and because you have a bare piece of land, doesn't mean that the ambulance isn't gonna come there.
No, I, I, I'm just, just trying to say when they say $50 a parcel. And again, it's how that would be incorporated though because obviously you said you've got 10 different tax parcels.
Right.
About 40 and 40 and 40. Now it's looking $2,000 to you because of the personal ownership of the partners. And then I don't know how many of the residential people, but you know, when you start ambulance service, to me it looks like how do you tax people living in rental property?
You tax?
And services for the rental people, what the rental owners want them to pay them down.
Yep.
And then also...
That's why you tax the owner of the property.
Well, that's what I'm saying, so the fairness of this would be really tough to, uh, a person has to pay attention to that. That's, that's what I'm seeing. I don't know what the, what it is. For example, that housing district, uh, that you're proposing in, in the back is, or they're, they, obviously they're low income or middle income, whatever they are. If they can't afford it, then what happens? We would tax them and it's, uh, see that, that, that's my issue. I, my issue is probably the burden of the taxes that would be thrown on, you know, relatively few, few... I, I have no, no problems with paying the, uh, ambulance bill. Let's get that right. But again, who's paying for everything? That's what I'm thinking.
Again, it's gonna be based on the RFPA model.
You're working on that.
So they're gonna base...
Thing is how it's gonna be incorporated. Sorry.
My guess, they're gonna have a residential fee and a commercial fee. How they, or if they tax the vacant lots, if you will, hasn't been discussed.
Steve, I don't know what that looks at. It's a complicated thing. I, I know we need the ambulance service, uh, again, are they efficient or are they, you know, those are all questions. We've gone over multiple times and shown that they, you know, I trust you, Jen, as well.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next guy that went to the update in Duluth Street, over in project from the CN in the area. We've got lots going on there. Probably things that we've got in the future, whether residents are aware of this, that we'll be, they wish to contract from blasting. And I contacted the contractor that's in charge of that and that's about 6,000 cubic yards of rock. That's what we blasted over there. Uh, they mentioned to me on August 10th, maybe that they might be doing some blasting and utility work. Well, that's a, that's a pretty big chunk of blasting. That's putting up to about 1,000, 1,000 truckloads, uh, dump truckloads. And we have not, yeah, I think Cheryl sent them a letter, I'm not sure, asking for their haul roads, things like that because obviously that's a huge amount of rock that we move through residential areas, which are five, I believe they're five ton. So we're looking at that. Are there any big issues that we have to, um, consider, put our restrictions on that so we don't, remember, rather streets? Of course, the county wrote, uh, 120, that'll be up to the county, I think we can't... Joe, you might be familiar with that. Do you have any say in 120 or is that all company? Or will that be all the company, whether they would boost it, that tend to follow the traffic through town?
Do you refer to 20 or 120?
20.
I think this one, that one. I'm sorry, right? Well, I think the county would have first right of the jurisdiction if they wanted to incorporate, uh, Collins and Guide to the City. I think they could, but I think it would start with the county. It's probably a nine ton, I think. It's a nine or 10, but I certainly hear what you're saying about Duluth Street. You know, we, uh, just to throw out there, when, when the bridge in Irrigsburg collapsed back in about 2015 or whatever, the CN and heavy equipment used the county roads in that area. And there was a deal struck with the, with the county and CN to basically reconstruct and repaint 98, uh, in that area. So it's a possibility. I hear what you're saying about frustration on Duluth Street. There may be a situation where, depending on, on how, or if they haul, maybe an agreement could be struck for compensation related to damage to the street.
Yeah, I, I see we have a choice here. Either try to negotiate a haul order for them or restrict traffic would come to a written agreement that we would be, you know, how they rebuild the street to nine ton because obviously that, I'm assuming the alleyway down by Regalia Grill in that area would be, uh, obviously I, I reject anything going around by cassings and islands and, and those places. There'd be no reason to go around there. But if we can't script, strike an agreement for that, I, I follow the alleys. Is that, is that the street or is that...
It's, it's called Shellford Place, but it's probably only as wide as the Platted Alley.
At that point, they can access the county road or they can continue down to 46 or they can get on the county road much easier. You know, I don't, I don't know if they can even make the turn with the, you know, with the...
Sure.
Down that center, so they may have to continue all the way down. So that's where the, that's, that's where we are right now. They are, what we do, we have the contract issue. We've been notified of, 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 uh, locations and everything, so it's gonna happen soon.
Right.
And, and then the blasting and pre-blast surveys, obviously, uh, county restrictions are out there. I believe, is it, again, Joe, I appreciate you being here, but is it gonna be like, is it a quarter mile that they have to do a pre-blast survey on?
I don't know.
And it's, Cheryl, did you get any...
There, there's different, different measurements for different projects. Like, I mean, I think it depends on the amount of residences within the area.
Could be density, it could be soil types even, but it's a pretty, uh, generally it's a comprehensive process when they do the, the, the pre-blasting assessment to make records as to what's in the ground and what's in its condition so that they can evaluate that after the work.
I, I talked to Matt Wood a little bit because he obviously did all that work with the sewer project, you know, and the, the blasting companies. And, and I kind of came up with just a sort of a draft of some guidelines or, you know, are we gonna, should we issue an ordinance or?
Well, uh, obviously, Phil, they have insurance for, have the blasters. KGM contracted, is the general contractor. I believe they've subbed out their blasting to, uh, who, who, and they do have insurance, so it, the who's having to make sure they have, you know, check the basics, check the foundations, check the walls or the racking that she brought. Again, you know, I don't know what rights they have, whether they've come into your house and do that or, uh, I'm not familiar with that, but I know it's a process. And obviously, it's a process that's done. We're not totally confident it has blasting in it and Duluth, everything, everything in Duluth is blasted, so it's something that can be done. But I think it also has to come to a decision, wanting you to come to an agreement, uh, on a haul road and we'll have to meet, uh, we'll meet with the CN or with the general contractor. I think the CN will probably push it out to the general contractor, but, uh, quite, quite honestly, I, I just assume deal with the general contractor because his, his discrepancy and pot hook is a lot better than the CN versus us. So, uh, I think much better off dealing with the individual contractors than the CN direct. Simply if the issue arises, there's not such a large discrepancy. We all, all friendly years to operate with the CN, so.
Where is this blasting going to be placed?
What was your question?
Where is the blasting going to be?
Again, they don't tell us. It'd be on their property, but I'm sure it's, it's either for the radar machine or the, or the bridge. Now, what, what they told me in the August 10th meeting, they were doing a minor utility work and some blasting. What we were discussing, when we asked them what was gonna happen under the bridge, they said soil origin engineering. So I believe most of the blasting is gonna be for the X-ray machine. Again, they, they didn't specify. It's something we have to find out, but we know what's in that area. It isn't, it isn't, not a bad info, it's, it's here.
So, you know, that's something big, that's something complicated. Now, something as easy as saying that you said it was part, and that could not be happened. So, you know, it's obvious that, um, uh, they had, the borough was cutting the trees, went over the property line, cut the trees off our property. Now, somehow, somebody came in there later and surveyed the property line. After the fact. And so you could, you could see why it was just done beforehand to prevent the problems we have.
Yeah, the survey was done a while back, the surrounding, deep surround. The property lines are well guarded.
No, S D H, S D H did this, right? And has the, has the surrounding on.
I've done a bunch too down the center of the street, but in S D H, there, there's multiple people working.
So, you know, it's very obviously marked out here, the, you know, property line. And why did they go over the property line?
There was, there was no, absolutely no reason for them to go over the property line. It's 77 feet from the trees to their tracks. It's 12 feet, 10 inches to the property line and it's roughly 17 feet to the power hole they had, which they had moved. So those are, those are things they just, just did.
So we're just gonna live with that? Can we just live with that for a...
I'm sorry, Karen.
We said, we're just gonna live with it.
Um, we, I think I'll let you, I'll speak on this if you want. We've talked to an attorney on this already and we've been advised on how to handle it. And we, we ripped the letter and, uh, we're waiting to hear, woman did, you just sent it out, so.
I haven't, no.
I haven't sent it. We drafted the letter and we're sending it out and then we're gonna see what kind of response we give them. We're asking for a meeting first and hopefully we can get some kind of resolution on it. If not, we are prepared to do so. Careful farther.
It's the, it's a council involved in this. It's a council, no, what's going on?
Yeah, we, uh, we met yesterday for an hour and a half, for about an hour and 10 minutes, with an attorney from the city who was an expert in crossing the property lines and trespassing. And he's given us some advice about how to handle this. And he also wants us to draft a letter. He's gonna review the letter and then we're gonna send it out and hopefully we can get something resolved. So we don't have to go to court, but there's many different options that he's given us and we're just gonna write a letter and see how it falls out. It's anywhere from compensation to, like, what was that, planting new mint trees?
We're trying to work this out for compensation.
There's even a possibility where we could make them, bring back oak trees and replant them.
They can plant, like, giant staves and everything.
There, there are a bunch of options out there. You have to pursue them all and we are pursuing them.
And who's expensive?
Theirs. Theirs, yeah, their expense. If they do something, if they do something, like cut those trees down, trees down now, and what we're, what they're doing now, they came back and said, well, we'll give you three sampling for two trees that were on our property, but that was their offer. But we don't have to accept that. Now, we're gonna do a letter and send back and say, what else can you do for us to mitigate this? Otherwise, the possibility of going to court. So you're hoping that they will turn around and settle first, so we're gonna ask for the who. Mike, I recognize you.
Thank you. Could we get back to the rock blasting?
I mean, I... I know, we, that, that's exactly right. We're jumping around, so on the rock blasting, and we'll, we'll continue on this, but let's get right, one thing at a time. The rock blasting is roughly categorized, there's roughly 6,000 yards that'll be coming over there. Where, I don't know, but I suppose, in a very small area in there. And so the council will have to make a decision either to restrict them and make an agreement with the, uh, with the, and I, and I think they'll have to make a much rather deal with the contractor for haul road than to deal with the CN because of the, it's just a lot to deal with. And if we can come to an agreement that compensation, the debate, as Joe suggested, that they did in other places, and, uh, that's not uncommon, the clearing of that big power line, rebuilding a bunch of the roads, and merge the area and stuff like that. So, uh, again, that's something that has to happen, but it's a very short timeframe because regarding, oh, fine, they're gonna go start doing it. When they start doing that, then they're not gonna pile that rock up and leave it in the way. They'd do no place for it to leave it.
Where is the rock going up to, like, Oaklands or someplace?
What do you mean?
Where are they delivering the rocks for the blasting?
Actually, um, the rock deblast is, is the responsibility of the contractor to remove it and dispose of it wherever he wants to. Uh, KTM obviously has that place up by the airport. Uh, they have, uh, the aluminum plant next to the lagoon. They have multiple areas that have been already being planted on 332. They have multiple areas where they can do that. I have not had conversations with them about where they're landing it. They haven't seen haul road, they have not seen, uh...
Anything.
Really anything, yeah, other than, I know the volume. And he has not given, in the August 10th meeting, uh, the bureau sent a history contract, but they have not been given a timeframe from the contractor, when to be expected. Now, we did receive some notices of, of, for utility locations, so it's gonna happen shortly. And so we have to, we have to resolve how we're gonna handle the export of it and also make sure that pre-blast surveys, which the contractor is sure is gonna do, but we wanna make sure. And we don't want to get any... make sure, and we don't wanna have any sedimentation trees where the contractors just, these people have been directed by the CN, that's not gonna be acceptable.
And the blasting, a quarter mile?
In hand, a plant in hand.
The effect of that blasting is about a quarter mile?
Yeah. You know, a quarter mile is real common. Again, Joe mentioned that it can change, it can change sometimes, but a quarter mile is basically every, every house in town.
Right.
Yeah, I know that, I mean, so, that's how big a problem it is. Trees are one thing, but nothing like the blasting.
Thank you.
And so that's all I know. I know we have to take some preliminary action here, and I think by the next month we will have a decision, we all will work against here, and thank you, Joe, for that information about the air and everything, that'll be on the table, and again, I think we'll either go to the contractor and feed the first, or look out and chase it down, that's all we can do.
Mary, the utility locates were for north of the tracks of the, of the whole area that they purchased from Ed Ornebauer. The parcels that were purchased from Ed Ornebauer that are north of the tracks, that's the utility location?
That's where the blasting is located, Ed, because of the previous conversations I've had with Ed and the CN, where they were gonna blast and have customs out, whether customs in the house, right, by Ed's rock, and these are, so where exactly they have it all, but they own the whole point, so it's gonna be on the point.
You know, a few years ago, you were there, Joe, we had that big meeting, a big zoning meeting regarding blasting that they wanted to do down there, and ended up voting against it because of so many residents that were going to be affected by this, and the impact on their homes. Now, that was down toward Moonlight Rock area, and this is going to be much, 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 much worse. And at that time, as we, you said, you had some specific statements about how close the homes would be affected.
Sure, I think the question on that goes, that was to start a quarry, starting a quarry and doing improvements or utility works, they're two different animals, same as.
Still doing all the blasting?
Yeah, they still, still blasting, and the rules still have to be followed, but to start a quarry that's gonna be operating for years, they're doing this, and quite honestly, they got that hammer, says it's essential service, we would play that game trying to stop that action. They have to follow the rules, but we play.
But how, I mean, so, but.
We would never have money to.
Is everybody in town supposed to have somebody come in and inspect their house prior to this?
Yes, exactly what I, no, we won't have to inspect, they will inspect, the blaster will inspect, he will send, maybe hire a firm to come on and do pictures and record everything. And every household has a record of what it is, because it's for their protection. We've done this multiple times, right, a construction company did it, where we've taken over seventeen thousand pictures just to ensure that somebody will come and see if it's cracked by a sidewalk, and then we pull the picture, oh, it was cracked or it wasn't. So those are the things they're gonna be doing.
But you're saying that this is supposed to be done relatively quickly, but yet the contractor's gonna send somebody around to every home in Rainier and stuff.
I will tell you today, I was, I've been inspector on the job here for the last three days, and much, everything, but today there was somebody up with a big cat back home, they were scraping, and it's in the rock, you can tell, it was right over my head.
They clean, clean the rock?
Yeah, and they, I mean, to me, I thought, well, they're getting ready to throw in some blasting.
Yeah, John, I know they're going to, I mean, their time is running out, they're not waiting to, generally to do this, so, but I know, I have not seen a schedule, it was just in casual conversation I had with them in August, up at the bridge, in August, that they mentioned blasting, had that blasting, that they weren't gonna do anything, so then I thought, I'm gonna track this down, and they named the contractor, so I did track it down, and he gave me the quantities, he did not give me the start date, but he, because he hadn't submitted a schedule to him, but he's getting, it was soon, that was a week ago when I called. So it's getting close, but they will have.
And I think that everybody in town is on the same rock formation as that in the peninsula.
Is it possible that, is it possible for you to contact the contractor and just get the agenda?
Yeah, I can contact KGM, who submits the schedule to the CN, and I can talk to Tom Caboss and see, is your pre-blast survey in, and when are we expecting the actual operation? Because they probably hire a firm to come in, because ours are many households, to do the pre-blast survey, and I don't know, we didn't, we hired a firm, we, you know, they have professional cameras, they know what to do, and they will come in and they will do that, and I'll see what I got for a schedule, and be able to bring that to the next meeting with, when some study's gonna be, but right now, I'm just telling you, it's gonna happen, those are the steps, and I don't think we can stop it, all we can do is try to make sure that we have designated hall routes, we have agreements in place, that if damages take place, we're gonna be compensated. Joe, as your professional engineer, would you say that's the correct steps? I really value your opinion on this.
Yeah, I'm surprised that they haven't been more, I guess, progressive with regard to the pre, the pre-blast surveys. There can be a little bit of time associated with that. Generally, they, you know, they put a hang tag on your door, they'll try to arrange for an appointment to get inside your house, they'll try to get your permission to get on the ground outside of your house, there's a little bit of time required to pull all that pre-blast survey work together typically.
Well, that's what I was trying to say, there's a procedure they have to follow. All we can do is make sure, the same reason, you know, the regular homeowners, property owners come in here and ask us that the CN and his contractors follow the procedures that go with a project like this, because if they don't, what are we doing? We don't have a big enough pocket to defeat them, you know, I mean, they know that, and that's what we'll be up against, so the best thing we can do is get ahead of the curve, point the rules out, make sure they try to follow the rules, and if we put it on the contractor's back, not the CN's back, we have a much better chance of security, you know, cooperation. And that's my personal opinion, and if I was a contractor working for them, and somebody come to me, I'd make sure right outside the road. Any further discussion?
I'll go back to CDM's design plan for the whole field, so we can all see what they're doing. I mean, we're making our work just left, and we don't know what they're doing, they're coming and blasting and all, we have no idea what this thing is even gonna look like.
We did, again, a talk to Stacy Lyons, and she told us she would keep us abreast of what they're doing, but on a weekly basis, we've never seen the whole project. The only thing that we've been privileged to see was when I initiated that meeting on the bridge, simply because of the flood damage and worried about piling in the block or the height of the bridge, stuff, they agreed to a meeting, which we had on this ten, Ms. Mackenzie was there as representative of the Regulate Properties Association, and they showed us one, basically one picture of the bridge where the pilot was going to go under the river, and what they were gonna do, I don't remember anything else, he never showed us anything about the radar machine, he never showed us anything about a blasting schedule, other than that they were gonna blast. Do you remember anything on the line that's also seen for this?
A couple of comments, but, and I think it's worth repeating a statement that was made earlier, that, you know, yes, it's odd that the blasting seems to be under a pressed schedule, and there's no communication, and there hasn't been a well-organized pre-blast survey, but the survey is typically, the pre-blast survey is typically to protect them, not you. It's so that if you file claims, they can have a baseline to judge your claim, but if there's no baseline, I don't know how they refute your claim. So, I find it very strange, to the point where something is just not understood, you know, either the blasting's gonna happen in the spring and it's not gonna happen here soon, or they just said, to hell with it, we're just gonna take a chance that everyone chooses, I just, it doesn't make sense. But going back to your comment on the August 10th meeting, yeah, I was invited to that because the meeting was about the bridge, and there was, you know, no discussion about the multiple projects going on here, really, it was, they're, they're in effect widening, they're doing some preliminary work to put two tracks through here, and then they're also acting basically as a contractor for the government for its advanced survey machine, and then they're also doing the bridge. The meeting was about the bridge, with hardly any discussion about the other points, and I'm glad to share what I heard about the bridge, but I, you know, I take your guidance.
Again, all, and he heard the same thing I said, that they're supposed to start blasting, and I did have a conversation with Tom Caboss approximately a week ago, that he had not delivered a blast schedule to him yet, but he was getting to it, and I'm sure by now he must, he has to arrange for his blasting, he does excavation all the time, that just often, and general contracting, so I may be able to get a start date, and with that, he has a subcontractor that's in the blasting, he may have, or should have, a date of this pre-blast survey. Until then, I'm just making everybody aware, there is a lot going on, and, you know, we got calls in the different organizations, and people trying to help us on this, I remember when the government stood here and wanted that thirty-five foot high wall, and I was clear to point out that that thirty-five foot high wall is a real controlling point, I pointed that out at his meeting on his ten, that that is a real controlling point for the height of the bridge and our crossings on twenty, because once they install that, and it's four foot concrete walls, and, you know, a hundred and five feet long, it is cast concrete, and they'll say, well, that's what it is, and that's what we have to do. So I think that's why, my own opinion is why they're pushing that project to get foundations in for that, so then they can base their other design based on what they've got around it.
I just hope that it's not one of these instances where they, you know, that old adage, where you go ahead and do something and ask for forgiveness later, I mean, I would put it past them, if they need to start blasting, they say, oh, you're sorry, you know.
Again, that's, that's my theory, and simply because of what.
I've been out for ten years, and I've experienced, and that's my theory.
A past history, I'd say, that is a justified theory, and so all I can do is tell you what I can try to help here, help the city here, finding out what I can do with the information.
But when is the council going to meet with CN?
Whatever CN wants, that's the problem, Sue, whatever they wanna do, so, if they don't wanna do it, they don't.
They don't even respond.
It, it, it's, well, I can't tell you how tough it is to even get them, I'm surprised they even showed us a picture of that there, that was only because of about six months of steady conversation that they even showed us a preliminary design, and based on that, there's no accident that the whole property owners come in here and ask us to proceed with the ITC, you know, maybe then follow the procedures that are mandated, and come out of that meeting, otherwise, what the hell have we done? Same with the blasting, we're gonna phone up on that. Go ahead, Greg.
I was wanting to try and help her with that. I can't speak on behalf of the council in terms of trying to strike a meeting with them, but if you organize your opinion, it's always worth writing a letter so that you have tracks, and that's why we did this at the RLPOA. We wrote two letters to them documenting our issues, primarily with the bridge, that's what we're concerned with, is the design of the bridge, and of course, the knock-on issues with the conveyance of water through the narrow here, and of course, the implications for flooding. So, you know, we write a letter to leave a paper trail to articulate what our issues are, but then we share the letter with the International Joint Commission, the Army Corps of Engineers, with the, with legislature, I mean, with, I'm sure, who we share it with?
Coast Guard, everybody.
Yeah, everyone.
All concerned parties.
Yeah.
I think that that's a great idea, and that's, I think that's our only, only choice, because I do know they have to get an approval for that bridge. If they offend one of those organizations by plugging up the river or doing whatever, that diminishes their chance of getting approval. Now, they spent a lot of money on lobbying, and has all kinds of lawyers and stuff like that, so we know we're up against that, I mean, if we get, find out who has to get an approval, get the letter, send them off, mass mailing, whatever it is, it helps our position.
I don't, the slave organization, the property owners, you know, they've done a great piece of work there, and the only is, I wonder, if they mitigate the problem with the bridge, then what's gonna happen to this, of this pool?
The river.
The river. I mean, as far as a floodwater, I want to consider the situation.
Well, that's exactly what we meant with the, really, the property owners, the ITC, so, there's some legacy problems that are out there right now from the original construction of the bridge, it didn't remove the debris, I mean, you can look around this town, there's probably a dozen pictures of the nineteen, nineteen oh eight bridge crossing, you can see all the debris in there, and after that, they filled in the causeway, which was a trestle, and so they've had some issues that they created, not this particular, when you say this particular group of managers of that, but those are problems that they created unknowingly, and now we, now we're seeing more frequent floods and everything else, and that can be weather change and everything else, but still, it's because we can't get the water through there, and that's, that was the reason for the ITC.
But I would think that they would do the modeling to show what would happen to us here on the river, on the river, if they solve their problem.
Greg, have you got any issue with that?
So, you know, the International Joint Commission has done a lot of the modeling work for this body of water from, from the bridge to the dam, and I think what you're saying is, if you relieve this bottleneck, would it then just push a lot more water into this area?
Yes.
The, I think, I'm not an expert, I'm just gonna parrot what I've heard, those conversations come up before, and the feedback is, the dam is not working effectively in the beginning stages of the flooding, because it's all being artificially held up here at the bridge, so therefore, you've got a weird situation where you've got flooding happening here, and the dam is actually at still a very low water level and not reaching the gate levels that you would think.
Very complicated then.
But if you remove the artificial weir, this kind of lake here with the rubble, supposedly the dam will actually be able to react sooner and get the water towards Lake of the Woods sooner.
Yeah, they will.
Yeah, but yes, I mean, there's, there's a lot of bureaucracy involved here, and no one, no one in this area seems to have any authority, it's all, you know, others, other people, and the, primarily the International Joint Commission, which is of course Canada and the US, and a lot of the people involved are actually not residents here, and so they have different.
Yeah.
Well, again, I can help you where I can, I'm trying to find out some timeframes and some of that, but they are not very forthcoming, and we keep trying to send letters and ask for that, and we don't see what we get from them.
You know, excuse me, and I'm sure you're gonna think I'm really rude, but it does appear to me, though. to me, though, that you communicate with them, it's just that the council doesn't communicate with them.
Dude, I think we've all talked about some different time, but I've talked to them quite a bit in the past and I've talked to them at six o'clock a day, at five thirty a day with the, the soil work guys to make sure that they didn't block up the land and do this stuff. So yeah, I'm in communication with them all the time, trying to find out, trying to find out what they got going on and hopefully we can head some of these problems off. I don't know what else to do, I mean...
But do you and Corvus counsel those things then?
Much as I can, much as I can. Some of the stuff you you can find out, it's just, you hear from one of the workers, what is it, we're blasting, oh, we are blasting. So it's hard to get, you know, hard to get rumors and and the truth of them because they don't want to communicate. They want to do everything on their property and they're real secretive and I, well, Joe, you want to do that with the, with the quiet zone, right? You put the first camera up and we had a flock of lawyers and everybody else calling us and just work camera, I mean, they're the hardest people who weren't working, so I hope not. That, I think that's just fine compared to where we're getting into here.
Ideally, what I would like, especially since all of this started, even before the fiasco down there, was that the CN would send somebody, maybe not Stacy, but somebody who's local to come and give us a monthly report of the expected dates or start times and even if they aren't sure, we'll start this month, next month, some car blocking the agenda to give us that update as a small presentation, council present, public here. And I've been a major like proponent of that because, because there's so much going down ground trails, trying to get hold of people, to get people to answer phones, it would make most sense to do that, but what I've been told is that they're not going to come and be with us necessarily. I mean, if someone has heard differently, please correct me, but my ideal situation is for that to happen and it's a common courtesy to the community that they're working in and causing extra noise and pollution and sometimes doing things in a non-legal way and I think it's good on their part to do something like that and maybe the council can request that, but again, they don't have to do anything.
Well, when Ms. Stacy was here, she very loudly said that one of the things she wanted was to work with us, she was, we were so important, they care so much about us, I mean, we all remember that.
Mark, I see you had your hand up.
I had one question. Mayor Waker and I talked about this a couple of days ago. When I was a young child, and I'm sure Sue Swenson grew up here also, we had three trains through here on Avenue, they were twenty-four dollars. And now we're up to what, twenty-six to thirty-four?
Thirty-six.
And so...
Thirty-seven.
We talked about this, insulated wall, we mentioned the wall across Datchell Road. I scan my dad's place quite a bit. And the noise level here is, for lack of better words, obnoxious. And when I sit over there some days and I think, okay, great, we're going to, we're going to double track this, we're going to times this noise by two, but there's two trains.
Yep.
It's it's unfathomable. I talked to Ben Napper who works at the railroad, he says, Tom, when they get the double track in, there's going to be a constant train of just hauling grain shipments. And you think, I get it, it's going to go away, I'm going to shove it down right through it, just like they talked to Crease, but I hope to hell at some point, a wall is brought up with these people so they don't destroy this community.
Mark, let me address what we've done so far on that, about three, four months ago, five months ago, we sent a letter to Pogeshar and to Staubert and to the CN and wanted us to put up a containment wall, like a traffic wall. And further on that, we sent a letter, Greg, you suggested, to a lot of the concerned parties. And also, to further that, on the letter that Cheryl is drafting or is drafting, because of the destruction of those trees, which were supposed to act as a buffer zone for the aesthetics of that X-ray machine, it's now more important that we try to get trees and that wall may, the vines on it and terrace may be a portion and we were going to put that in a letter that, you know, because of our first request for that wall, now it's even more important that that wall acts as some aesthetic barrier and noise barrier now. So again, we're doing exactly what you said or what you're talking about, we're ahead of the curve on that, we've sent out that, we're sending the next letter I was going to have to the CN and have addressing the need now to more of the need for the wall and also we're doing, trying to mass mail whatever we have to do, so. Again, we're trying to address those issues.
I hope not.
And again, you know, we're up against an animal here.
You drive into the city on the freeway, you know, there's miles and miles of track, of track with towed wood walls. They're probably thirty-four, eighty-nine.
You drive down the freeway and you see them all, and everything else, and the state puts them up and everything else and and so they're going to be very aesthetic, so one going in and beating on Avenue looks great, that's all fake stone and it's beautiful and it's terraced and so they can make it look good, but do they want to or do they have to, see, and and that's what we're up against. I would tell you, I've come across a lot of problems.
But you'll have to keep, like you mentioned, Pogeshar involved, the higher-ups.
Tina's...
It'll be like...
Stop, stop!
Is there anything about us if we, you know, if you don't keep the higher-ups involved?
Well, I think we could hash over a whole bunch of things, folks, but what I'm going to do is bring it to the next council meeting, what I can find out about the blasting from the general contractor, anything anybody else can find, what they're doing, let us know. Cheryl's going to be drafting the letter and getting it out.
I also...
Again, I'm going to appreciate Joe, Greg, your information on this, your input on this, so I've got to tell you, I, I, nothing's really carried me out, but since this, since this thing started, it's getting me carried.
Six thousand cubic feet, they're giving...
Yeah, we are, it's fifteen thousand tons. And you're all about fifteen tons in a dump truck, we're losing all of our things, I, system out of it, it's precipitating, that's the other rock, but it's roughly, you know, and that's relation, that's not what it is. So that, that, you know, as a county engineer, you can see, that's, that's an issue. I've already looked and found out that there's ways they can access that, they can drive down their track, we've done it multiple times where you could access it right at twenty, twenty twenty here, one wheel right on the, down the center of track, drive down the track where the rock is, they can have some variable ties there, you drive on them, you drive off, get loaded and come out and make it back to the county road. That will interfere with a lot of their train traffic, so I couldn't, folks, are too, too keen on that idea, but it is a way they can get it out or they can load it, get ready, call it up. So there's a lot of options that are out there. Obviously, they want to take the easiest route there or they want to ride, drive down our street to do whatever they want, but again, that's, we'll make that decision, no sense repeating everything again, but that's it.
So next, we hope to have this information, is that correct?
Yeah.
Council meeting?
I should have, I can't, I should be able to have, because, you know, again, it's, it's October, they don't, they don't want to be out there working and that really is blasting, if anything in, in October is going to be a lot easier than in December, so that much rock is not, you know, in that, that's, that's tough rock, that's not like a blasting port, that's, you know, we're having to be careful, that's not, I don't know what the timeframe is, I'll see if I can find that, what the timeframe is to, to do that, you know, whether it's a blast a month or a day, you know, that that type of thing. Tom is a pretty good guy, though, Tom, pretty well, so he will share what he can, so. Anything else, Sam?
Yes, I would like to all to take what Cheryl proposed for this and take a look at other to see if we do actually need to apply amendment to some of these restrictions and and stuff that are, that she wrote out that she packed out.
Okay.
For what? For the blasting, for doing blasting and all of that, that, because we don't actually have anything on what's per se for that, so we really need to have something to...
We could adopt it.
At least adopt it, that we try to protect ourselves a little bit in some way.
I think we adopt the county procedures and people...
I don't really have any procedures.
Oh, you don't? Joe, can I ask you another question? Do your company have blasting procedures?
I don't, I don't think we do. You know, when we were, when we were working in the Moonlight Rock area, there's been a lot of that, talking about those procedures, talking to some of the blasters, but I don't think we have that in-house specialty.
Would you, would you know of anybody that would have blasting, Duluth must have a blasting procedure, do you know of anybody that would have blasting procedures?
I can certainly check her out, Greg, and get right back to you.
I'd like that, really, we can get a set so much easier, adopt something else, we can look at them and if they rotate, they will, they're able to, see, there you go, they're for blasting, we don't have a procedure they have to follow. So what do we tell them? Well, we followed all your rules, we don't have any.
Anything else? That motion to adjourn?
Seven, all favor?
Aye.
Thank you.